Okay, it is six o'clock and it is May the seventh of two thousand and twenty-four. Ready to convene our briefing and work session. And thank you everybody for coming tonight. Just one item of housekeeping for council and for staff and for those here tonight. I do intend to request an extension on my three minutes for the mayor's report tonight. Because I have invited all the crews who worked on PIP days. To come tonight just to recognize them and I would appreciate council coming out and getting the picture recognizing them as well. You may recall I did recognize Betty Dunn, the organizer of PIP days. As a city champion of the city. So I'll be asking for just a little bit more time to take care of that tonight. Another piece of housekeeping for everyone present would like to know. In terms of the processes that are going for the reelections, elections and so forth. We are doing the canvassing of the votes this Thursday at four o'clock. And that's in accordance with state law and so that's going to be out there or want to do it in here? Either way. Do it in here. It's about at four o'clock on Thursday. We've been doing the canvassing of the votes. I will be presiding over that. Only two city council members are required. But any city council member that wishes to, I need at least one more. So we have to have at least two to do that. So we will take care of that at four o'clock on Thursday. And then the oaths of office will be administered during the next city council meeting on the twenty-first. So I wanted to let everybody here know the processes, how we're working that. I will also make that exact same announcement for housekeeping when we get into the city council meeting out there. Okay, all right. City manager, floor is yours, sir.
Okay.
Discuss the dead items.
Consent agenda for A is minutes. So I'll move right on to four B. Consider a resolution authorizing Weinberger, Logan Blair and Sampson to obtain an order of sale which will allow for the foreclosure of. Authorizes sale of properties by Dallas County in public or private sale in accordance with. Sections of property tax code for the following property and then one zero one one goes drive. And our finance director and CFO, Mr. Jackson is here and actually so that she doesn't have to stay, Mr. Jackson, why don't we introduce, take some liberty. Sorry, Mr. Attorney. With a quick introduction on this matter.
She's not part of the consent.
So. Let me take this opportunity, council, to do our formal introduction of our new assistant finance director for the city of Duncanville. Ms. Tia Pettis. Uh, Tia. As many of you know, Tia was previously with the city of Duncanville and so it's our privilege to welcome her back to the Duncanville team. And so, Tia, it's a pleasure to have you and welcome officially welcome aboard to the finance department and to the city.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. Just for those who know me, it's great to see you again. For those who don't, I'm looking forward to getting to know you better. And a little bit of background, I've got twenty-two years of experience in accounting. Twenty years of that has been in governmental accounting at the city and county levels. So thirteen years I spent here at the city of Duncanville. This is where I think of myself as growing up professionally. So special place in my heart here. I've also been at Cedar Hill as finance director, most recently at the city of Irving. But it feels good to be home. Everyone's been so welcoming. Just passionate about public service and grateful to be a public servant, grateful to work under Doug's bench. We've gotten to know each other the last few weeks and also Richard. So it's my pleasure to be here. So thank you.
Welcome back, Tia.
Thanks.
So I think we were talking about one zero one one. Uh, four C, consider a resolution authorizing a hotel occupancy tax administrative agreement between the city of Duncanville and Duncanville Community and Economic Development Corporation. And I'm happy to answer any questions as is assistant economic development director, Laleisha Day, who is also joining us this evening. And our director might be here, no? You haven't seen him? Our director might.
Let's try another welcome to. You got three minutes to tell her your, uh, tell us about yourself.
Three, whole three minutes.
All right, make it two and a half.
My name's Laleisha Day. I've been educated for the last twenty something years. I also have a background in real estate. I have a business here in Duncanville. I've had previous businesses in other towns. So hello, I'm here.
She brings a wealth of knowledge in real estate, marketing and business, business entrepreneurship and so, as well as events. And so we're kind of restructuring some different things and so. She's hit the ground running already. So on the resolution. For the hot tax, I did brief the council at the April ninth meeting. We've talked with the DCEDC about them doing this up to fifty thousand dollars. But they will need a whole public hearing. So that is sound a little different so that the public has a chance to have input at the DCEDC. And they can really spend some time evaluating those.
For each and every?
Yes.
Each and every one is going to be a public hearing?
Yes. Uh, four D, consider a resolution to authorize expenditure of forty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars from the general fund as the final payment from McCallum Jones. For the two thousand and twenty-two audit and. Finance director, Richard Jackson, has been negotiating this and I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add or if the council has questions on this.
Counsel, I know we spoke on this briefly in terms of trying to negotiate. A rate that we felt was commensurate with the additional work, but also in fairness to the original amendment. That was done between the city and McCallum Jones. So we feel that this number is a fair number. We came in lower than what we were initially expecting the invoice to be. So again, a plus to our budget.
It's good. Any other questions?
Well, I don't know. I'll let the chair of the audit committee go in.
What I do is I want to commend the city staff for working this through. And because I mean, there was a lot to this whole issue. And thank you for doing something that ended up being fair and proper.
I believe when I spoke with the city manager yesterday, I said kudos to negotiating it down to this amount. What was, can I ask, the original? What was the original? Or what did we say?
Uh, the D, the, uh, the original number was actually incomplete because it had only included. The last three months of the calendar year, October through December. That invoice itself was over fifty-one thousand dollars. And so it also did not include what would have been invoiced for January, February and March. As we did not complete the audit until March fifteenth.
So what was incomplete was fifty-one thousand and then an additional three months would have been added on to that.
Correct.
So we're coming in under what the original incomplete number was. Those to you.
Thank you.
Sure.
In fairness, this engagement was set up for sixty-five thousand dollars originally. And because of issues and things that's gone on, so again, we're in a fair position. So again, thank you.
Okay, item four E, conserve ordinance amending the twenty-three four budget. By appropriating revenue fund out of rent revenues and amending expenditures per general grant asset forfeiture fund. Lead budget administrator, Otay. She's trying to hide. Who's here to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions? Staff report was very extensive on this.
Okay, four F, consider resolution awarding a bid and authorizing a contract with Paradigm Traffic Systems for traffic equipment, supplies and services through buy board contract. Six nine five two three for a one-year term with the option to renew for four one-year terms and estimated contract amount not to exceed one million forty-one thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars over five years. Subject to exercise of contract renewal and city council appropriation. Assistant Public Works Director Matt Ryan is here to answer any questions. Four G, consider resolution awarding a bid and authorizing a contract with consolidated traffic controls for traffic operations, equipment, supplies, services. Through Houston, Galveston area council and governments for a one-year term with an option to renew up to four one-year terms and estimated contract not to exceed one million one hundred and sixteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars. Over five years, subject to exercise of a contract renewal and city council appropriation. Again, assistant public works director, Matt Bryant is here to help answer any questions.
Uh, just a comment on that one. Did ask a question of city manager, Mr. Bryant did respond in terms of the. The gap between the FY twenty-four amount of forty-two thousand dollars and over two hundred thousand dollars for FY twenty-five. It turns out that that forty-two thousand is an increment of FY twenty-four. If you look at the dollar amounts for the next successive fiscal years, that's roughly what we're going to be spending around two hundred thousand dollars. So I was just curious about that bogey between forty-two and over two hundred. Thank you, Matt.
Four P, consider resolution awarding a contract with U.S. underwater services for annual water storage tank inspections and cleanings. Through buy board contract six six two 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 for a one-year term with the option to renew up to four one-year terms and estimated contract not to exceed one hundred and fifty-nine thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars. Over five years, subject to the exercise of contract renewal and city council appropriation. Again, assistant public works director, Matt Bryant is here to answer questions. Four I, consider resolution awarding RFP twenty-four oh two two on the call. Water sewer line repairs, replacement rehabilitation services and authorizing a contract. With Raymar Construction for emergency and non-emergency water wastewater repairs for a three-year term. With the option to renew up to three additional one-year terms for a total contract not to exceed one million five hundred and forty-one thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Over six years, subject to the exercise of contract renewal and city council appropriation. Assistant Public Works Director Matt Bryant is here to help answer questions.
Just a comment. Thank you for including in the contract the response time.
Assistant Public Works Director Bryant, is this the same company we used on Round Top?
No, sir, it is not, but they have done workforce before. We had a conflict with a gas line on Hill City and they moved in, took care of it that afternoon. So they're very quick and efficient.
We'll be providing more information, but we did have an emergency situation over the weekend with stormwater situation on Round Top. And we're doing some work out there now to help get that corrected, but we'll provide additional information to council just so you're aware.
Okay, thank you. City Secretary of Council, Councilor Cal.
Thank you, Mayor. For the council calendars, the highlights for May is the police memorial on the thirteenth, May thirteenth. Addition is the May sixteenth is the arts commission mixer. And I believe everyone received a flyer about the arts commission mixer. For June, we have the joint meeting with arts commission that was rescheduled because of the power outage on that day. So that one is rescheduled for June twenty-fifth. And one council meeting in July, which is July sixteenth. That's all I have.
Any inputs, questions, comments?
Yeah, yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Finch and council, I'd like us to consider some date. We have a contract with, with Mike Condon. And I'd like for something since we're having new people coming in if we can get them scheduled sometime soon.
And just if I recall correctly, we are under contract with him on an annual basis. So doing, asking for another one is not going to be any additional cost to the city. It's already there. Any other comments, inputs for the council? Moving on to briefings and presentations, first one is discuss an opportunity to provide scoreboards at the primary baseball field at Harrington Park. Mr. Stevenson, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Mark Stevenson, Director of Parks and Recreation. I just want to introduce our guest here to share with you a program that this company, Youth Scoreboards. The city staff was introduced to Youth Scoreboard Company a few months ago. We've had several conversations with them about their, their product, their services. We think it's an excellent opportunity for Duncanville to improve our youth athletic complex at Harrington Park by adding video scoreboards. And the program that Tom Moon here is going to walk you through, something that has proven successful in Oklahoma, I believe, where it started. They have since moved down to Houston and now moving into the DFW area. They have completed installation at, completed installation at ULS at Texas Star. If you've not been to the Texas Star before, it's one of the premier athletic complexes in this area. And they're now installing in Cedar Hill. So although we won't be the first in the west southwest, we'll ride behind them if we move forward. So just so you know, we have preliminary discussed contracts with Elton Brock and the company. So again, the council, if something you think is something for us to consider to continue pursuing, I will do that in the presentation.
Hello, my name is Tom Moon. I'm with Youth Scoreboards. Thank you for the time. So Duncanville, the city of champions. My ultimate boss at Youth Scoreboards is a gentleman by the name of Coach Barry Switzer. You might know him as a three-time NCAA champion, O U coach, Dallas Cowboys champion, last time Cowboys won Super Bowl. Kind of scary, but true. Anyway, he sold his company, the majority share to a company called ImageNet. ImageNet is about a hundred and eighty million dollar company. We have twenty offices throughout the south and southeast United States. We have a large digital display solutions group and so it was a perfect marriage for digital scoreboards and youth scoreboards from Coach Barry Switzer. This is our office in Carrollton. If any of you would like to come visit and see some of our audio visual offerings, feel free. I mean, give me a call. We'd love to give you a tour of the facility. Uh, we do conferencing solutions much like what you have here. There's our scoreboard. We have a picture of other audio visual solutions. We do, here's a barista solution we did for a company. I call that out because if you have concessions that you'd like to do. Menuing and do some customization of specials, we can provide that to you as well. So this is important screen. We handle seventy thousand devices in the cloud. What's the cloud? It's not wired. It's not wireless. These are devices like printers, white, white, white copy machines that, multi-purpose machines that are managed through the cloud. So this is a standard scoreboard. This is an analog scoreboard. The Parks and Rec guys are very familiarized with an old controller. Parents hated to use them. They're hard to keep score with. You can't take them out in the rain. This is where we're at today. A big, large, beautiful digital scoreboard that we monetize by running short eight-second ads, two of which between outs. And a minute and twenty worth of ads, static, animation and fifteen second movie ads between innings. Here's the size of the boards, six foot, six inches, ten foot, eight inches. That gentleman's six foot five, so you can see just the sheer size of the board. Sixty-eight panels square foot. And your typical boards are about, you know, eight by, eight by four. So thirty-two, so over double. Uh, this is the middle of the day, three hundred foot fence line. You can see very bright. You can see it from all the way. The spectators can see it with no problem at all. This showcases an ad that's running in between an out or an inning. So let's talk about how the program works. The program works very simply by a scorekeeper, manager, team manager coming up and scanning a QR code. After this QR code is scanned either through an iPhone or an Android, they'll punch in a four-digit code that's displayed on the board. Right here, it's eight, four, seven, three. Once they do that, they are locked into the board and then they keep score from their handheld. So real simple, real easy. This is how the advertisement's working. You'll see a strike's recorded. On the third strike, it records an out. Two eight-second ads. These are age-appropriate ads, no tobacco, no alcohol, no gambling. It's. Two eight-second ads, in concession, that's in between outs.
If it goes to marketing of the ads.
We do everything. So Youth Scoreboards manages all of this. Duncanville doesn't have to worry about that. We do the type, copy. We work with all the advertisers, regional, local, regional and national, like Dick's, McAcademy. This is a card that, you know, your, your, your guys will hang on the fence line of, the, the pin. That allows the parent to scan the QR code and some simple instructions of how to operate the board. I think it's important to understand, you know, why we're in this business. If you add up NFL, NCAA and Major League Baseball and all the attendees of those, those venues, it's negligible and a rounding error compared to U-Sports. There's over a billion spectators and attendees in U-Sports across the country. So this is why we're in the business and this is a market that's untapped and nobody else is doing this. Uh, Coach Switzer started this at the college level many, many years ago. And he's bringing this technology and this experience to youth and kids. Uh, he was actually at his grand, grandkids' baseball game and he goes, this scoreboard will work. And this is something I was doing at college. I could bring this to the youth level. And so he started that six years ago. So the program details are very simple. Uh, Youth Scoreboards provides the screens, the content management system. All the operating system. It's a turnkey installation. You know, we're, we're putting up about twenty thousand dollars to do this at each scoreboard. Okay, we handle all the warranty and major repairs for the term of the agreement. We asked for a ten-year agreement from the city. Um, in return, there's a sublease agreement and Bart, you have that agreement. We need the city to give power to each location where the board's going to be. And then add provisions to the current insurance. Basically, if somebody goes and vandalizes the board, our asset's covered. And then we're providing Duncanville for free to scoreboards. We have another program. Cities like Garland are signing up to actually buy the boards. If you buy the boards, then it's a fifty-fifty split. You get fifty percent of the ad revenue day one. Under the free program, once we pay the boards off in about two or two and a half years. We give the city twenty percent of the net revenue, advertising revenue. So it's a win-win for everybody. The fields are upgraded, the kids have a great experience and the city makes a little money after we pay the boards off and we, we get our investment back.
So talking about net revenue, what's the gap between gross and?
About twenty percent.
Twenty percent.
Sales S G N A is about twenty percent off the gross. Uh, what happens next? I mean, we just need to sign an agreement and we've, we've determined we're going to start with four. At Harrington, there's a quad at the bottom, has pretty good attendance. Um, obviously, we don't want to do this with fields that have nobody there viewing the boards. Because at baseball and softball games, all the parents are what? Looking at the boards. The dwell time is insane. It's three hours sometimes where parents are at these fields. So for monetization and advertising, it's just, it, it's a win for us and it's a win for the fans. It's a win for the parents because it's so easy to operate.
So can we run city ads with no charge?
Great, great question. We give, basically it's called inventory. So there's about two hundred ads per game that run. We give the city four percent of the inventory to run whatever ads you want. We have a, you know, a, a, a bounce house or, you know, fish fry coming up. We have a city hall thing coming up in a couple of weeks. You can advertise that on the boards. Absolutely. Uh, and that's pretty much it. Uh, I want to get through this quickly. I know everybody's, you know, working overtime and so any questions?
We have to erect the poles and the electricity?
We do. We, we do everything except the electricity.
We just have to run the electricity.
That's it.
And I would add, we've already got a price quote for that. It's about twelve thousand dollars for our investment.
Each?
No, no. And we do have money in our operating budget to cover.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Barry Cruz.
Yes, sir.
So your marketing, your, your ads, can you run them, I guess, locally, statewide, nationwide? Are they different?
We have, we have a central content. We have, it's really kind of, our command center actually has all the scoreboards, you know, eventually it's going to be national. We expect to have six hundred boards in Texas alone. Um, and we can put an ad to a board or to a facility. Uh, we can change it by age group because a lot of times cities will have the young, young kids of one cluster and the older kids in another. So we can target those ads independent. So it's, it's pretty sophisticated. How would you deliver those?
Do we need a field trip to ULS to see how it looks?
Sure.
Just add, I mean.
Only if we can build a copycat facility. That facility is one of the best in the country.
Better bond together if you want. I've seen that ULS complex. It's amazing. But I think it'd be worthwhile for this, just to actually see these things in operation.
Minimum Cedar Hill board?
Uh, it's being installed this week, Cedar Hills.
Oh.
There's five boards at Cedar Hill going up this week. Um, Garland is going to be installing ten and there's several other cities that, in fact, I've been with Princeton this week and there's several other cities that are very, very interested. Carrollton's real close. We're in the final stages of negotiating the legal contract. Hope there's no lawyers in here, but lawyers get a hold of contracts. It always changes. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mark, any closing comments?
No, if you have any feedback, unless you disagree, we will continue moving forward with working with Mr. Brock and city attorney on finalizing the contract.
So what you're looking for is from some consent from us from after this briefing to proceed with making this contractual?
This will be on future agenda.
Right? So unless there's any objection to that, we see this on a future agenda. Okay, yeah, Mr. Egger.
You may have to make some adjustments in your sign order because now you're all on the advertising and city property, which you appear to afford.
In your recommendation, would we make that after the contract with these individuals or before or concurrently?
In current.
In current. So everything rolls at the same time. We don't have any hangers to make these things happen. Okay, thanks. All right. Evan, spare cruise.
Can, can we, I think, sir, can we review that whole? The agreement? I mean, everything. So, you know, signs on buildings, I mean, the whole thing. There's, there's folks. Yes. There's folks that want to put those, you know, stuff on sidewalks and, you know, they're starting to, businesses that want to advertise and we won't, we don't allow that yet. So I think.
That's off topic, but we understand where he's going.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, city manager's making note of your comment.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to item three B, discuss proposed professional services contract with Half Associates. For master planning of the Charles F Lad Nature Preserve. Mr. Stevenson, floor is yours, sir.
This is remarkable.
I know this is, we have a lot to cover. Are we going to be able to make it in thirty-five minutes?
I believe so. Not three. Three will be closer than thirty-five, I hope. Again, Bart Stevenson again. I think this is a watershed moment really for the community. We're bringing forward to you tonight. We'll discuss it in the briefing session. Of course, there's an individual consideration item later this evening. To approve a master plan process and contract with Half and Associates for the lad, Charles F Lad Nature Preserve. And so we're excited that we're here tonight. This has been a long process. Uh, we initiated an RFQ process several months ago and that resulted in eight, I think, respondents. And we had a committee who reviewed those responses. Three of them were here on the council. Councilmember K, Sparrow Cruz and Contreras were all involved. We reviewed all eight respondents and we scored them. And the top firm out of that process was Half and Associates. And since that time, staff has been working with Half to negotiate the scope of services along with the prices, fees associated with it. So the contract includes eight phases from initiation of the site inventory and community engagement. And then, of course, with the conceptual and the final master plan for consideration by the council. There are multiple opportunities throughout the process for both community input as well as the council. Through this process. They project it will take about four months to complete. Um, and then, as you see there, the, the agenda contract is a hair under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this process. I think it's a very fair price for the services we're going to be providing. Half could not be a giant unfortunately, but hopefully if you have any questions, I know Mr. Finch, Mr. Brock have been, have been instrumental in negotiating both the contract as well as the fees. So if you have any questions, the three of us, we're ready to take those down.
About the question, the lad fest, Mr. Finch, you mentioned that the. Right, almost using your words, that the best proposal came in four hundred thousand.
That was this proposal.
It was.
And it was this proposal and Elton did a wonderful job of negotiating.
I misunderstood because at the lad fest, I understood that it was another proposal, but we're going with one, this one.
It was actually this.
This was negotiated from four hundred down to one fifty.
Yes.
Okay, I got it.
Share.
And really keeping all the.
And he's American on commission, is that right?
And, and keeping all the scope of services and Elton did a wonderful job in, in working with them and getting them down to something that we could afford, so.
One of the interesting things that I read in, in looking it over was that. But part of the proposal they're going to put forward is the cost of construction of anything that they recommend. So we're going to see a complete proposal in terms of how the lad is going to be, the property is going to be used in addition to any additions that are going to have to happen to it. We don't know what those are going to be. That's what they're being paid to, to tell us about. So what it does is it gives us a leap and a leg up on knowing what those future costs are going to be the budget for to implement what they recommend in the proposal. As I, as I read that. to implement what they recommended in the proposal, as I, as I read that.
I also want to just take a moment and just talk about money. So Jennifer, wherever she went. Um, I believe this current year's budget had fifty thousand dollars in it for this. Um, so, uh, with council to know, uh, council member, uh, Conson introduced me to, uh, Mr. Bobby Lyatt. I've been having quite a few conversations back and forth with him. Um, we had a little bit of an issue. Thank you, Alex, for helping me get the proposal posted so Mr. Lyatt could see it because we had some issues going back and forth with, uh,
Mr. Jennifer.
Getting it, uh, to a point. But, uh, he has committed to paying, um, I think it's fair to say at least fifty thousand, I think, is what he committed to you and me, but I think he's going to contribute more than that. The most recent conversation I had with him was splitting the cost of it, so.
And those seven acres that he still owns?
So the seven acres, he has told us that we could include that with the overall master plan.
I noticed in the aerial, it shows those seven acres being.
Wow. I thought you were the biggest negotiator.
That one's got the law behind it. Okay, go.
That was the entire secret.
That's it.
Preparing questions, yeah.
Let me ask you a question there because the, the document itself is like forty-four pages long. Uh, it's, it's involved, but again, it's a legal contract, but we've seen in there. This briefing was minutes long. So it is on our agenda for an item of individual consideration. So the assumption could be, if you have no questions here, then there's, there can be nothing out there. Or if you have questions, let's cover these things now, but instead of, let's, let's take some time now. We have the time. If we want to dig into some details, let's do it now. If not, everything's going to roll pretty quick out there. Just want to make sure that I'm understanding in terms of your situation, that I say this right now, that there's not going to be any problems while we're saying.
Yeah, it's a, it's a go for me.
Rock and roll. Okay.
If we could fill the time with the online control.
Yes, okay. So, um, I want to turn, yes.
So we've had some conversations and so.
Want to turn over to Mr. Finch.
So, um, unfortunately, this did not make the, um, did not make the agenda as a briefing item. And so I think, and you, you corral me if I'm getting too far in a line, but essentially, um, I, I can have a conversation with the police department about animal control, C W O, and hear the information. You would not be making any decisions tonight. There would be no discussion. I know that you want to look at the ordinances relative to vicious dogs and that type of stuff. But what we talked about with staff was let's do that with the new council so that we have a time to get a little bit more into that.
Good evening. I'm going to try to keep Mr. Hager off me as well. I'm going to speak directly to the city manager. Good evening, sir. Um, I want to introduce, uh, or reintroduce, um, our senior animal control officer, Chad Chamberlain, who's been here roughly seventeen years. And then our newest, uh, Monica Jones, who was here in February. Um, so with, with no further ado, I'm going to hand this over to senior animal control officer, uh, Chamberlain to proceed.
Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you, council. I know I'm speaking to the city manager, but thank you all, the mayor. Um, that was the introduction, so I guess we're good to go. We'll get this started. Um, so one of the biggest questions we get is, what do y'all do? I mean, what, what are y'all here for? What's y'all's purpose? What's y'all's goal? Um, so basically, animal control, and this is just a broad PowerPoint here, but animal control, um, is here for the health, safety, and welfare of the animals and the citizen. Um, and that's a, that's a, to break it down even more here, is essentially keeping citizens safe from animals and animals safe from citizens. Um, that's our primary goal. That's what we're here for. Uh, we do that by responding to emergency and non-emergency situations within the city. Breaking that down even more, this is seven primary responsibilities of probably twenty-seven, I guess, that we have. Um, that includes impounding animals at large, um, at the Tri-City Animal Shelter. Um, a big, and we can, I'm sure at a later time, we could probably break this down even more, but kind of our process on how we do things like that when we, uh, respond to a call like that, it's essentially, we, we want the animal to go home. So we, Monica and I both have, uh, microchip scanners in our truck. Um, if we're able to corral the dog and actually catch it at the time, we will try to scan the animal for a microchip, um, call the microchip company and try to get it returned back home. We're unique because it's just the two of us. So if we have multiple complaints or we know it's a, a, a dog that's getting out fairly often, we communicate quite a bit. Um, so obviously that we're not going to return it four times in a week. We would take it to the shelter. Uh, once we're at the shelter, then we, um, vaccinate, um, provide food and water, uh, enter it into our pet point system at the shelter. Um, investigating animal bites and quarantining animals, which is at the same location, uh, for our quarantine is at Tri-City. Um, that also, uh, could, after investigating the animal bites, could, uh, potentially go into declaring the animal, uh, vicious um, after our investigation. Um, a lot of the vicious animals, um, essentially, after investigation, we talk to the owner of the, of the animal. Um, I would say probably ninety-five percent of them end up either surrendering the animal or, you know, not wanting to pursue anything as far as the victim on the bite. A lot of times, we, we have to have a witness statement or an affidavit to pursue that even further. We don't have a lot of court hearings for the vicious animal because of that fact, the, the owner of the animal just wants to surrender. Um, so we're not involved in court a lot when it comes to vicious animals. Um, investigating animal cruelty and welfare concerns, um, setting traps. We are trying to do, we set quite a few traps for wild animals. Um, we are trying to get more into the education side of deterring, um, wild animals. Same with feral cats. We have a T and R program, which is a, a trap neuter release that we work with Tri-City, uh, where they will spay and neuter the cat, tip the ear, and we release it back into the, to the neighborhood. Um, we are responsible for remote, removing and disposing of deceased animals. Um, that's city streets, uh, personal pets, highways, uh, which are then as well disposed of at the animal shelter. And, uh, another thing I added on here was prepping and submitting rabies specimens to the, uh, Texas Department of Health. Um, that's basically a, um, an act of what we do for submitting, uh, for rabies if we could get on further down to it, but it, uh, we, we send the, the specimens off for testing. Um, this is kind of how we prioritize the nature of our calls. Once we res, get on duty and if we have all these calls holding these nature codes, uh, holding, obviously, our animal bites are going to be our top priority, followed by animal hazards, uh, welfare complaints, and then deceased animals. Some of our numbers for the fiscal year, uh, uh, twenty twenty-three, uh, animal control responded to, uh, twenty-seven hundred calls. Um, we impounded fifteen hundred animals, and that's a combination of, uh, dogs and cats and wild animals. Um, we took, uh, thirty-eight animal bite-related reports. And same with that, that would be dogs and cats, uh, and we placed sixty traps out.
So i- if I may, uh, th- these two, there's never a time during the day that there's not calls holding. Uh, they are constantly busy. Uh, fortunately, in, in their environment, we have the ninety-five percent surrender, uh, surrenders. Because we didn't, i- it's a very, it's a, it's a process. Um, so these guys work very hard. They do, uh, as much education as they can. Um, obviously, our goal is to change behavior. They don't issue a lot of citations because we try to educate. Um, and we continue with the education until it's just not happening, and then that's when the citations start happening, so. Great job, guys.
So if I, so, um, I know that we had unfortunately a, a really tragic accident, incident involving a dog. I know you guys responded as well, Spire. Thank you for, I know it's a difficult situation. A number of council members contacted me right around the same time, maybe five minutes, wanting to understand more about our ordinances. And so I know that we need to have a much more in-depth conversation about that piece of it. Is there anything that you can share relative, and I mean, keeping it still very high level, about that situation with, if, or ordinances? It sounded like it all happened within a house.
It did. They were confined. Uh, they weren't, they weren't running loose. Um, it was, uh, owner surrender, uh, of the animals, so they actually owned the dogs.
And so the public was never.
Never endangered at all. No, sir.
Uh, Mr. Hager, just to make sure, Mr. Finch did mention this was a briefing strictly between police department itself.
That includes you too. You can't ask a question either.
That's, that's my point. He said no discussion. So city council, there, there's no permissible question.
If you do want to have questions, we got time. I assume we're going to break after this. If individual council members want to ask a question with the permission of the city manager, you may question, uh, police chief and the animal control. At your leisure.
I always want to do what Robert says.
And then we'll bring something back much more detailed relative to the ordinances.
Yes, absolutely. There's not no, Robert's coming back. Robert's.
Okay, uh, so that concludes our briefing presentation portion of our agenda. And city secretary will call that at six, uh, forty-one. And city council members, if you please, and staff, please get into the city council.
All right. The timestamp is seven o'clock, seven P M. on the seventh of May of twenty twenty-four. And we are convening our city council meeting on this date and time. Thank you for being with us. The first item on our agenda is to have an invocation, and we want to invite Patrick Guerrero of the Crossroads Assembly of God Church to give our invocation. Please rise.
Thank you. Before I get started, I just want to shout out all of our first responders, uh, three nights ago. A young gentleman who is studying for the ministry, uh, was in our gym and he fainted. He was, uh, passed out for a little over twenty minutes, and, uh, first responders were there and they cleared out our building and made sure everything was safe for our service the next day. So we just want to honor, um, the Duncanville, you know, E M Ts, firefighters, everyone that showed up at Crossroads Life and helped us out. We just want to publicly acknowledge that and just, uh, thank them for the awesome job that they're doing. Let us pray. Father, we thank you. We thank you for the opportunity that you have given us here to gather, Father, to do, uh, your work, Lord, and that is to get things done in our community, this beautiful community which you have called us to, Lord. That, uh, many of us have just such a passion and a, and a drive, Lord, to see just greater things happen here. I pray that you just continue to allow us to be a light, a light in the, not just the South Dallas area, Lord, but in all of, of the metroplex, Lord, and in the state of Texas, that you can just continue to use these leaders and, Lord, just give them steady hands and fresh ideas as they move forward with your will for our city and also for our community. And it's in our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ's name, we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Please draw me pledges to our flags. Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the government for which we stand. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Please be seated. Next item on our agenda are reports, and the first one up is myself for the mayor's report. And, uh, council members, I have a feeling I will probably be exceeding the three minutes, so if I would, you indulge me, I would like to accept the motion to allow me to exceed three minutes.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Mac Burnett, seconded by Mr. uh, Contreras. Please vote on extending me three minutes. Thank you very much. First thing I would like to do is extend congratulations after the elections that occurred in our city. I would like to extend hearty congratulations to Mayor-elect, Mr. Contreras. And to incumbent, Mr. Don Mac Burnett. And to incumbent, Ms. Karen Cherry Brown. And I don't see council member-elect for District Five. Does anyone, I do not see him. Uh, Mr. Kyle Pennabaker, who is council member-elect for District Five. So and to carry on. To let you know the processes and how we do this in accordance with Texas law, the first thing that has to happen is that the city, the county of Dallas has to verify the votes, which they have done to us, and they do that through our city secretary. The city secretary then notifies the council of those unofficial voting results, which she has done. And it's also public information. It's also on our website now. The next thing that has to happen is something called the canvassing of the votes. This is a legal term. And that is where the city council that gets together, we read through, or we are, actually, the, the city attorney will read through the votes to us, and then the city council will then verify those votes, and that's the council. And it only takes two council members to do that. That will take place in our briefing room this coming Thursday at four o'clock in the afternoon. It is an open meeting. You're welcome to attend. Quite honestly, it's going to be very, very fast. But it's something legal that we have to do. Now, once that is done, the oaths of office may be then administered. And by agreement of all those that were elected and reelected, that is going to occur. The oaths of office will be administered at our next city council meeting, which will be the twenty-first of May. So if you want to put that on your calendars, that's when Mayor-elect, Mr. Contreras will then take office. Uh, Mr. Mac Burnett, Ms. Karen Cherry Brown, and Mr. Pennabaker will take the oaths of office, and then we'll be seated here. And at that point in time, something will happen. I'm going to disappear on into the sunset. Uh, the other thing I'd like to mention is something very special. And I have asked those individuals who have participated in our property improvement program to be with us tonight and the recognition for the hard work that they do and the volunteerism that they, that they do as well. It's a wonderful thing. I, uh, I was, I was so pleased to be able to recognize Betty Dunn. She's the organizer of PIP for many, many years. And I recognized her as a champion of the city not too long ago. But going to the houses, uh, that were worked on last week and talking to all, all the crews out there, I just asked informally if the crews could come tonight just to be recognized and to be thanked. So if all the members of the PIP days that are crewed are here tonight, would you please come forward so we can thank you and recognize you? And we want to get some pictures. Uh, any council members that want to join in, please come on down. It's a happy time. I would also like to make mention to thank our Parks and Recreation staff and also individuals involved from our city staff that participated in the National Day of Prayer in our recreation center. Uh, it is a national event. We do participate in that national event. There was a, President Biden put out a proclamation, Governor Abbott put out a proclamation, which I was able to read. And we, as a city, put out a proclamation as well, which I was very fortunate and pleased to sign for that particular event. So for all those that. to sign for that particular event. So for all those that participated in the National Day of Prayer, thank you very much, because it means a lot to have that covering over our city. The final thing that I wanted to say, well, not the final, next to the final thing, this is where I'm going to turn to Mr. Hammy to help me out here. We did cut the ribbon on Fire Station Number One. This is, I guess it's, the serial number is two seventy-one. We did this last Friday, and it was a great, the grand opening. And Lacy Freeman, the executive assistant, Greg, what is she, executive assistant to the chief, put together, go back one slide. It was a very, very interesting thing that these fire hoses, she created these, from what I understand. Oh, there, there's his, yeah. So we, we were given instruction on how to dismantle these fire hoses, but each one of us, and there were many, many people that received these things, received this portion of the fire hose. It was a really great thing. Go on to some slides. And so this is what we see in terms of the event itself, and we are so happy to be able to present to our firefighters a state-of-the-art facility. And taking a look at it, I wanted to mention something, and I mentioned it to several people, and he wasn't around to hear it. One of the things that we did in the design of this particular facility was take a look at not just the cosmetics of it, the aesthetics of it from the outside, but we happened to have on our council a firefighter, Mr. Joe Vera Cruz, recently retired. But his inputs into what needed to be inside this building were very, very valuable. And I'll never forget that, Joe, because I remember we were talking about what about this, what about that, and then the storage space. One of the things that you mentioned very specifically was to take into account what kind of storage space is necessary. So if you take a tour of this building, on both sides, there are stairways leading up to storage areas, which I don't believe the architect added originally. It was something based on your recommendation, Joe, that we put that in there. So it's very, very special, and to see the way the hazardous gear is stored and washed and so forth, I think, I don't know, Chief Chase, do they have to have a, an invite from the fire department to come tour, or can they come tour? A citizen can just drop in? I know if you're not a call, of course not, but how does it, how does it, in terms of somebody wants to see the place? Okay, very good. Very good. So here we are with the, those are all the shifts of the working two seventy-one. And one of the other things, you may go back in time and remember, one of the necessary or the necessities of building this, this structure, is that when we bought some new fire apparatus, and I learned that term by sitting up here, instead of calling it a fire engine, it's an apparatus, that the new quint that we purchased wouldn't fit in the old fire station where it was sited at two seventy-two. So we had to bring it, we had to take that and those dimensions to make sure the two seventy-one would carry the new quint, but it's stationed over two seventy-two. So there's a lot of work that went into this, and I know Chief Chase was was on the ground with city manager Finch many, many times, looking at it, making sure this thing was going to happen the right way. Do we have any more? Is this it? Okay, thank you very much. And the the final thing I wanted to mention is, I know that usually Mr. Mac Burnett covers the high school, but something very special happened with our, yeah. I read about our Duncanville High School Boys, six A, four-by-two-hundred relay team broke a national speed record over the weekend. And reading the the news publication on that, each one of the four members of that relay team, they're not all seniors. I know that, what, three out of four are seniors, and they have letters of commitment. I know Kayden Durham, probably the fastest human on two legs at his age, has already signed with LSU, if I remember correctly. And I know that our girls play second, the girls' team plays second in the state as well. So we're really proud of what's going on with our Duncanville High School. So, city manager, that concludes my comments that I wanted to make for the city, for the mayor's report. And city council, thank you for allowing me to take more than three minutes. Moving on, Mr. Mac Burnett, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. You covered some of the things, so I appreciate that, too, because there's a whole lot of things that happened in Duncanville, and they had a Lot For Hope event, and our crime victims advocate did that at Lakeside Park. It was a wonderful event. Acknowledge that, and the park staff for making that. There is PIP days. And all this is stuff that's happened over the last couple of weeks and through election period and stuff like that. The Heart of Duncanville, I was involved in that. I was part of the race for that. Bob's Bags is a thing that's at my church that we do to help the less fortunate people. There was the First Annual Lad Fest, outstanding event done there. There was the National Day of Prayer. We had the Fire Station Grand Opening and stuff. And so I did also, you know, mention the track team. Also, the boys' soccer team had an outstanding year. It's the first time in thirty-eight years that the boys made it to state and stuff, and that was, that was, that was outstanding from that. And dating myself, I was on the first U I L-sponsored Duncanville soccer team. And so, so I'll always follow those guys. I wanted also to say congratulations to Karen Cherry Brown. Congratulations to Mr. Contreras. And I'm also want to thank the citizens for entrusting me again to do good things in Duncanville. It's really appreciated. Also, on another note, I want to acknowledge some things, because it's, again, it's been a really weird time during election stuff. But Ally Barbis was somebody, was a young adult that had diabetes, that she passed away and stuff. And I was at a funeral today for Noah Higgins, who passed away, twenty-four years old. And also, I'm asking for prayers for Nate Warren. He's our city planner. Nate's in the hospital, and we need the prayer warriors to go out to Nate as well. There's other things, too. There's upcoming Mother's Day, but there's, you know, please honor your mom. My mom, I'm so thankful for her. There's, we've got the police memorial. There's a Run For The Wall event, which might not be as popular, but it's a, it's a District Five event, or it's in District Five, but it's the the bridge at Duncanville Road, but it's Run For The Wall. It's a salute to our veterans, and it happens on a Sunday morning. There's a fire truck pull coming up that benefits Special Olympics, and of course, we have a Memorial Day service coming up as well. And lastly, Mayor, I want to thank you for serving. And it's an honor to work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Ms. Gooden.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, City of Champions. Good evening. I wanted to say congratulations as the mayor and council member Mac Burnett has already done. I would like to say congratulations to both council member Mac Burnett, council member Ms. Karen Cherry Brown, council member Greg Contreras for being mayor-elect. Congratulations. And to Mr. Kyle Pennabaker as well. Look forward to working with all of you this next year. Congratulations to Duncanville Panthers on winning Girls Conference Six A U I L Track and Field Championship, second year in a row. Yes. And as, and as the mayor said, to the Boys Four-by-Two-Hundred Relay, setting a national record of one minute, twenty-two seconds, point twenty-five. Way, way back in the day, I used to run four-by-two-hundred relays, so that really caught my eye, and I was proud to see that, and almost made me want to go get my track shoes, but, yeah. So moving on. Happy Teachers Appreciation Week to all you teachers who take your time and invest in our children. Thank you for all that you do. I would like to announce Kingsman Coffee, their grant opening and ribbon cutting this Thursday, May ninth, at eleven-thirty A M. That will be also with the Chamber of Commerce. Friday, May tenth, also at the Kingsman Coffee, W F A A Crew Meet and Greet, eight A M to ten A M. On this Friday, May sixteenth, at six-thirty P M to eight-thirty P M, is the Arts Commission, Arts and Business Mixer, Spring Two Thousand Twenty-Four Edition at Pink Yoke. Guests are invited to support the library's free pantry by bringing donations. The Chamber is hosting burgers, bowling, and business this Friday from four P M to six P M. Contact the Chamber for details on how you can participate at nine-seven-two-seven-eight-zero-four-nine-nine-oh. Now, I would like to kind of take a different turn. Over the past few weeks during the election season, I've heard some comments that I would like to address and see if I could invite the citizens to work with me on finding a solution to. During the election season, it was said, it is some time for some change in Duncanville. We are not engaging everyone. Only a few people are heard. Those comments concern me because I don't want our community to feel as though everyone isn't being served, and there may be gaps in how we as council is serving you. I would invite you to please contact me. I'm the at-large. Contact your district council member. Provide us any insight that you have in areas you feel that you aren't being served as well or as great as you would like to be served. Those are very concerning to me, and I'm interested in finding a solution and working with you on doing so. I will go as far as even to put my telephone number out there, which is available on the city's website, my phone that I carry with me, two-one-four-two-two-eight-eight-two-five-nine. Please feel free to give me a call. Let's talk about what your concerns are. How can we move past this and not have this continue to plague us as a city? We are a very beautiful multicultural city, and I would like for us to find a solution on how we move forward with working together. So with that said, I have already started discussions with the city manager on coming up and brainstorming with ideas that we can do as an entire community, how we can come together and at least start the conversation and start engaging everyone. And like I said, we're a beautiful multicultural community, and I think that's one of our strengths, and I would like for us to find a way to maximize on that moment. With that said, you leave it up to me. I will have us a cookout at one of these parks, and everybody can come, and a good old potluck and cards and dominoes and everything else. But please, I'm interested in hearing from you, and let's do what we can to make our city the best city in the Southwest. Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Coons.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I have one event done that you didn't cover out of the many, but I just want to thank Barstevenson, Noel Garcia, and the rec staff for the Duncanville Three Hundred. And so that was a great event. It was a rainy day, and so it was great to be able to have a place to take the kids and have some fun. And you might even be able to find a photograph of Barry Gordon on a tricycle. So if anybody's interested, adult tricycle, anybody's interested in that. So thank you to the Parks Department for that event. And I also wanted to thank the Public Works Department, Streets Division, Service Center, and David Keys for the, there have been many reports in my district through the C Click Fix app, and we always say, if you see it, report it. And I know that we encourage the residents in our district to try to use that as much as possible, and people are using it a lot. And so, but there have been many repairs from sidewalks to streets to alleys to potholes, I mean, you name it. People have been reporting things, and they've been getting repaired, or they've been getting addressed, and people have been getting answers. So I just wanted to thank David Keys and those departments for the work that they're doing there. And then finally, at this very moment, Texas Parks and Wildlife are hosting another Bio Blitz at the Lad Preserve. And so that started at three o'clock this afternoon. I think they're going till eleven o'clock. I think they're going to bring the black lights out again so we can see some of the bugs at nighttime. So if you don't mind keeping your kids up past bedtime, maybe that's a great event for the kids. And just to remind everybody that that's research that they're doing and data that they're collecting, and that data can be used globally. And so it's just great that the city of Duncanville is now participating in this global data collection and research for the environment and toward ecological concerns. So just wanted to report that. And I don't get up and leave and go to the Bio Blitz, wait for the meeting to be over, but should have a short meeting, I'm thinking. So, you know, we should be able to make it before the sun goes down. Thank you.
No promises. Mr. Contreras.
Well, there's not much left after those three, but I do agree with almost everything my fellow council members have stated. So I'll be short. I want to thank all the citizens that came out and participated in the elections, campaigned for their candidates, the hard work and sweat and passion that people have in this city. I would sure like to see it grow. The percentage of people that actually came out and voted is pretty low, but it's a nationwide problem. So I'm hoping we can do something by engaging our citizens, as Ms. Gooden talked about, to get more participation, not only during our elections, but at these meetings, whether it's by Zoom or whether they're actually here. I really want to see that grow, and I'm all for meeting with people to see how we can do that better. And I want to congratulate everybody that, my fellow council members that were reelected. Glad to have them back and glad to be working with them. And then I want to also add my, of course, we'll have time to follow up on this at our meeting on the twenty-first, but I want to say it now. I've got some big shoes to fill. This, this mayor has worked tirelessly and done everything that he could to promote the city of Duncanville in a very positive way, and I want to follow that path to keep us in the forefront and be involved with the groups that he's been involved with so that we can continue to learn from other cities and other entities and just become a better city because of that. So I want to congratulate him on a job well done, as well as his wife, who was there working hard with him throughout the entire tenure. So thank you very much.
Thank you to you all. Thank you very much. That concludes our council members' reports. City manager's report. Mr. Finch.
Yes, Mayor, Mayor-elect, city council, good evening. Mayor, thank you. Despite the fact that you told me on my first day you were not running for reelection, it has been a pleasure to work with you. You have been so supportive of me and helpful to me, and I want to thank you. I've heard you many times over the last four months talk about the pride that you have in our public safety personnel, police and fire. I've heard you brag many, many times about them. And so with the help of Cece and Francisco, and Francisco's been taking photos for us to help document a lot of things with Alex and the entire department, we wanted to give you something that would commemorate your passion for the public safety and our police and fire, and in particular, fire, and also recognize your final ribbon cutting. So, and Alex, I don't know if you can go back to that photo or not, but we are presenting you with a framed photo of your final ribbon cutting, and it's a picture of us with the entire fire department. So not quite done yet, Mayor. So I want you to know, Mayor, how much the staff really appreciates you as their mayor. And our Public Works crew helped us put together something, and Mr. Keys, I'll ask you to help bring this up. We actually have for you this evening something that is a little bit of a history internally with staff, but we are presenting you this evening with a road sign, Barry Gordon Way, two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-four. And on the back of the sign, on the back of the sign, all the staff has signed it and sent you well wishes on your way. Want me to hold that so you can talk? Right? Just stand there behind you? Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
That it? I'm overcome.
Truly.
And unexpected. Very appreciative. Thank you so much. Thank you. You know, one of the things that I learned a long time ago, I've mentioned this before, that I have a very close friend and mentor who is a retired Air Force two-star general, who helped me a lot to understand relationships and management and leadership. And during his tenure, when I was his subordinate, he made us all read the book by Blanchard called The One Minute Manager. And I refused to read that book because I said, well, it took me 20 years to learn. Nobody's going to teach me in one minute. Well, he made me read that book along with the rest of the senior staff. And what I took away from that book was that find people something, find people doing something right. Instead of always looking for people doing something wrong, find them doing something right. And I've attempted to do that, no matter where I've been and what my position of leadership has been. And that's why I try to remember people's names, first names if I can, but always to recognize the great job that people do. Because another thing that I bought, what he told me, was that remember that your people wake up every morning saying, what can I do to be great today? Only a very small handful wake up and say, what can I do to screw up today? And it's true. You trust your people, you give them respect, and they will wake up every morning and say, what can I do to be great today? And that's what this staff of this city is and that's what this city council does for me. I appreciate you all. Thank you. Okay. Back to business. Item number two on the agenda, proclamations and presentations. The first one is a proclamation recognizing May 5th through the 11th of 2024 as Drinking Water Week. And to receive this proclamation will be Mr. Matt Bryant, our Assistant of Public Works, and presenting it will be Councilmember Gooden.
Proclamation. Whereas water is our most valuable natural resource and whereas drinking water serves a vital role in daily life, serving an essential purpose to health, hydration, and hygiene needs for the quality of life our citizens enjoy and whereas tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy and whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend and whereas the citizens of our city are called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution and practice water conservation. Now, therefore, our short terms, Mayor Barry L. Gordon of the city of Duncanville, Texas, do hereby call upon all citizens of Duncanville and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 5th through 11th, 2024 as Drinking Water Week. Thank you.
Don't go far. Don't go far. Our next proclamation is recognizing May 19th to the 25th as the National Public Works Week. Councilmember Vera Cruz will present this. Told you, don't go far. And we have more members of Public Works in... Matt, why don't you introduce your folks?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is Joel Dougherty. This is our second-term utility superintendent. He came back to us after retiring in 2012. My executive assistant, Brianna... Oh, my goodness, Davis, Jesus. I'm so sorry. Our traffic superintendent, John Bojhar, and our equipment services superintendent, Asolo.
From the office of the Mayor, Duncanville City Champion's proclamation. Whereas public works, infrastructure, facilities, and services are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives and of vital importance to sustainable communities and the health, safety, and well-being of people in Duncanville. And whereas such facilities and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, engineers, managers, employees from your local public works department who are responsible for and who plan, design, build, operate, and maintain the transportation, water supply, water treatment, public buildings, structures, and facilities, and who deliver solidway services, transit, and fleet services, which are central to serve our citizens. Whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff our public works department is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. And whereas the men and women of the public works department of the city of Duncanville provide a vital public service. Now, therefore, Barry L. Gordon, Mayor of the city of Duncanville, Texas, does hereby call upon all citizens of Duncanville and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 19th through the 25th, 2024 as National Public Works Week, with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating public works department employees of the city of Duncanville, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to our community and in so doing have established for themselves an enviable and enduring representation for preserving the health, safety, and well-being of all citizens. Thank you.
At our next pro... Thank you, Matt. And to all... You know, I want to add something parenthetically. Last year I was at a conference of the Texas Municipal League and it was for all elected officials that chose to attend. And one of the questions the facilitator asked was, who do you think is the most important person in the city? Well, too many people said, well, it's the mayor, the mayor, mayor, and it's councilmembers and so on. And I raised my hand and I said, I disagree. I think public works is the most important position in the city because it's the one you touch every single day. When you turn on your faucet, when you take out of your driveway, when you have your trash picked up, when things go right, which you don't expect, it's because public works is doing their job unseen and unheard of. So to me, public works is the number one priority for appreciation in our city. Matt, too, and all the public works people, please pass that on for my personal thanks and I'm sure on behalf of all of us as well. The final proclamation is recognizing May 13th, 2024 as Police Memorial Day and May 12th through 18th, 2024 is National Police Week. I will present this and interim chief Stogner will receive. I know his real name, but he's always Matt. He's always Matt Dillon to me. Proclamation. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States has designated May 16th, 20... I'm sorry, 15th, 2024 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of the city of Duncanville play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Duncanville. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the law enforcement agency of the city of Duncanville unceasingly provide a vital public service. Therefore, I Barry L. Gordon, Mayor of the city of Duncanville, do hereby call upon all citizens of Duncanville and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 12th through the 16th, I'm sorry, through the 18th, 2024 as National Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers of the city of Duncanville, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to our community and in so doing have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of the city of Duncanville to observe May 15th, 2024 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who, to their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice to their community or have become disabled in their performance of duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. And to that, we thank you, our law enforcement officers of the city of Duncanville. Moving on to item number three in our agenda, citizens' input. In-person citizen comments will be heard during the regular session. In keeping with the city council rules and procedure adopted on 18th October of 2022, electronic mail comments will no longer be read aloud. Paper copies will be provided to the city council at the dais. The comments will be made part of the public record in the minutes. And for the record, we do have, all council members do have one comment that was submitted to us by email and we do have it in front of us. Pursuant to section 551.007 of the Texas Government Code, any member of the public has the opportunity to address the city council concerning any matter of public business or posted agenda item. However, the act prohibits the city council from deliberating any issues, not on the public agenda, and such non-agenda issues may refer to city staff for research in any future action. All persons addressing the subject to council adopted rules and limitations permitted by law and the rule that we have in our city of Duncanville and individuals are accorded two minutes. So when you... If you have a... And I do have some cards. I will call you forward. Please state your name and address for the record. There is a two-minute timer on the lectern and as well, the city secretary is timing the two minutes. So if you would please respect that, we'd appreciate it. And I will call forward individuals in the order that I have their cards. Julie Steger.
Julie Steger, 214 Meadow Creek. Mayor, could you come down here, please? We're faced with challenges every day and one of my challenges was to find a patch for the city of Duncanville. It does not exist. So I had the challenge to get one of his shirts. His wife accommodated yesterday. This will be one less shirt for him to wear because I took it apart last night in pieces. But what I came up with was, you're not going out with a bang, sir. You're going out with a bear.
About 16 bucks down to two. Julie, that's fantastic. Thank you so much.
You won't wear this one while cleaning the garage.
No, I appreciate it.
Mary Ann Taylor.
Mary Ann Taylor, 935 Nature. That is a hard bear act to follow. I believe you all may have seen already the comment that I sent. It was... I felt I was a little bit concerned about email these days. I am so proud to know all of you. Mr. Contreras has been my councilman and I've painted with him as well as with most of you. I've worn lots of shirts, I will say, in Duncanville since we moved here. But tonight I would like to just say again that I would like for you to consider a proclamation that I've drafted and sent to the mayor, Mr. Contreras, and Ms. Taylor. I don't want to speak of the difficulties of Jewish contributions, of Jewish conditions these days. There has been a spike in antisemitism and I would like for Duncanville to set an example. I would like for you to consider this and have a proclamation that reflects the love, the inclusivity that is Duncanville. And I am hopeful. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Montgomery.
Teresa Montgomery, 519 Allen Avenue, Duncanville. May 14th will be 24 years in that location. I'm coming before you again requesting, not suggesting, that you guys look at the proposal that was given to you by Monty Anderson and the Wheatland Plaza Project. On Saturday, I met with him again and he was adamant in letting me know that he was still approved for building an apartment complex at that location. I have had a petition signed with more than 80 neighbors that are within the 200 feet limit of where he's going to build it. I've also emailed that to every one of you and I also put it in the Flame East Neighborhood Watch where it was overwhelming with a lot of people who live in the area, in the vicinity, who are against this. We need a lot of things in this community and an apartment complex is not one of them. If you're going to do something that's going to benefit the community, an apartment complex is not that. We don't have movie theaters. We don't have, you know, a lot of things where families can gather. Monty Anderson doesn't realize that this is still something that needs to be reviewed. We have not been properly notified. The card that he presented, that he sent to us, had nothing mentioning an apartment complex. He said he was not rezoning it, but he was going to make improvements. So please go back and look at the original proposal and look up the things that he's now trying to put in that center. It's not, it's not working. I policed that back alley for the last 23 years and an apartment complex is not going to work, not for our schools, not for the community. It's not something that we all can benefit from, just Monty. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Graham.
Mark Graham, 410 Santa Fe Trail. I really do apologize how I look. I came straight from the Lad at the Texas Parks and Wildlife Bio Survey that's going on, which, by the way, we have herbiologists with Texas Parks and Wildlife San... I'm not going to try his last name. But we also have herbiologists up from Houston, Austin, and San Antonio. Plus, we have the biologist from the Perot Museum out there right now. And I don't know how many Texas, I mean, how many Texas master naturists out there. It's working, folks, I'm telling you. And I'm here to give you a pre-thank you for... I didn't realize this was being voted on tonight and I'm going back down there for the black light event that's fixing to happen. So I'm thanking you in advance. So I'm thanking you in advance because I have a feeling that's going to be all green, right? Thank y'all.
Mari Vega.
Thank y'all. Mari Vega, 611 Royal Boulevard. I just want to say thanks for being part of a free republic and the right to free speech. It is a bit of a picket hole that I question. So I looked up this company, H A L F F, and there may be a separate, hopefully very, very distinctly separate arm of it that is engaged in mineral things, drilling things, things that are pretty contrary to what we're trying to do with the LAD Nature Preserve. And it's a pretty big sum that's being considered. So I just hope that everybody's done their homework, that they've been vetted for the authenticity to do this preservation aspect and not exploit. And then, by the way, what is, what is the status of the mineral rights for that land? Just a question. And to that, thank you for everyone for your willingness to serve. Everyone in the room, everyone on the dais. Public service is a pretty thankless job most times. So thank you all for being willing.
Thank you. That concludes citizens' input. Moving on to item number four on the agenda, the consent agenda. City Secretary, would you please read the consent agenda items?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 4A, consider the minutes for the city council regular meetings and workshops from April 2nd, April 9th, and April 16th of 2024. Item 4B, consider a resolution authorizing Leinbarger, Gogan Blair, and Sampson LLP to obtain an order of sale which will allow for the foreclosure of and to authorize the sale of the properties by Dallas County at public or private sale in accordance with Section 34.05 of the Texas Property Tax Code for the following property, 1011 Joe's Drive. Item 4C, consider a resolution approving a hotel occupancy tax administration agreement between the city of Duncanville and the Duncanville Community and Economic Development Corporation. Item 4D, consider a resolution to authorize the expenditure of $48,900 for the general, from the general fund as a final payment to McConnell and Jones LLP for the professional auditing services as part of the fiscal year 2022 audit. Item 4E, consider an ordinance amending the FY 2023-24 budget by appropriating revenue, fund balance, and grant revenues and amending expenditures for general grant and asset forfeiture funds. Item 4F, consider a resolution awarding a bid and authorizing a contract with Paradigm Traffic Systems, Inc. for traffic equipment, supplies, and services through Buy Board Contract 695-23 for a one-year term with the option to renew for up to three one-year terms in an estimated contract amount not to exceed $1,041,843 over the five years, subject to the exercise of a contract renewal and city council appropriation. Item 4G, consider a resolution awarding a bid and authorizing a contract with Consolidated Traffic Controls, Inc. for traffic operations, equipment, supplies, and services through Houston-Galveston Area Council of Governments, contract PE05-21 for a one-year term and with option to renew for up to four one-year terms in an estimated contract amount not to exceed $1,116,856 over the five years, subject to the exercise of a contract renewal and the, and city council appropriation. Item 4H, consider a resolution awarding a bid and authorizing a contract with U.S. Underwater Services for annual water storage tank inspections and cleaning through Buy Board Contract 662-22 for a one-year term with the option to renew for up to four one-year terms with an estimated contract amount not to exceed $159,414 over the five years, subject to the exercise of a contract renewal and city council appropriation. Item 4I, consider a resolution awarding RFP 24-022 on-call water and sewer line repairs, replacement and/or rehabilitation services, and authorizing a contract with Raymar Construction LLC for emergency and non-emergency water and wastewater repairs for a three-year term with the option to renew for up to three additional one-year terms for a total contract amount not to exceed $1,541,667 over the six years, subject to the exercise of a contract renewal and city council appropriation.
Thank you, City Secretary. Mr. McNabb.
Motion, so move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. A second. By Councilmember Gooden. Council, please vote. Unanimously approved. Thank you. Moving on to item five, items for individual consideration. We have not had executive session, do not have one that I'm aware of going to happen, so we will dispense with item 5A. Moving on to item 5B. Consider approval of Resolution 2024-265 for professional services, contract number 24-75081 with Half Associates, Inc. for Charles F. Ladd Nature Preserve master planning services in amount not to exceed $149,900. Mr. Stevenson, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Bart Stevenson, Director of Parks and Recreation. As I stated in the briefing session earlier, this is truly a watershed moment for the Charles F. Ladd Nature Preserve. We're here tonight to consider a professional services contract with Half and Associates for the master planning services of the property. Staff initiated a request for qualifications process several months ago. Eight firms responded to that request. A committee, which was made up of staff as well as three council members, Councilmember Contreras, Councilmember Coontz, and Councilmember Veracruz, evaluated all eight responses, scored them, and Half and Associates was the top firm in that selection process. Since that time, staff has been working with Half and Associates to negotiate a scope of services as well as the associated fees with those services. Contract includes eight phases, including initiation and site inventory to community engagement, and then ending with a conceptual and final master plan services. As was stated and brought up in the briefing session, it also includes an opinion of probable cost at the end so that we know what we had planned, we would kind of have an idea of what it cost. The project timeline for this process is four months, and the cost is not to exceed $149,900. And with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Any questions from council? Mr. Contreras.
Thank you, Mr., Mr., our Mayor Gordon, sorry. Just a quick question about this to clarify the experience that Half and Associates has had with these types of projects. It seems as though when we reviewed their particular portfolio that we did see a number of projects throughout the state that were very similar to the LAD property. Could you, could you confirm that?
I can confirm that. They were one of the top firms with experience. That was one of the reasons they were selected. They also have a subconsultant that's coming in to assist them with this project that has even more specific experience with nature preserves. So those two specific items are really what put them at the top.
Right, thank you.
Mr. McNabb.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a similar question, so thank you for asking that, Mr. Contreras. But along the same lines, I kind of want to ask our city manager as well. There's an agreement with the master naturalist, and if he could expound on that a little bit.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember McNabb. And I know that this, the agreement previously with the Texas Master Naturalists came before council, the city attorney, and I'm going to need you to help me with this. But the city attorney actually went back with the attorney for the Texas Master Naturalists, and I believe the terminology, if I'm not mistaken, was a lease agreement that we were able to go ahead and operate, execute administratively. And so we actually do have an agreement in place today with the Texas Master Naturalists for them to begin some of the light work and coordination with parks on that. But, Mr. Attorney, I'll defer to you since you wrote the agreement, so.
Yeah, Mayor and Council is correct. About a month ago, we did have that item on the agenda, and we treated it more like what I would call lease. And after hearing comments at council, it occurred to me that maybe they were seeking, and you, as a city, were seeking a more informal relationship. And so what we did is formulated a license agreement. I talked with Ms. McCool on a number of occasions, made a less robust type of agreement with them, realizing that they just wanted the ability to come in upon notice to the Parks and Recs Department to perform some, what I would call, kind of routine maintenance or special maintenance that they have an expertise in. We were able to resolve the issue with regard to their insurance coverage to make sure that their volunteers were properly insured for injury while protecting our asset and our employees and citizens if there was an incident of any kind. So we were able to work that out. And Ms. McCool and her group were very gracious, and we got it resolved and got it signed by the manager. And Ms. McCool signed on behalf of the Indian chapter of the Master Naturalists. And according to what Mr. Graham said, they're out there chasing bugs tonight, I guess, so. Thank you all.
Mr. Coontz.
Thank you, Mayor. Just as a reminder, just a public reminder, one of the reasons why, one of the reasons why we're approving this, why we're at this point is because back, the deed from 1998 required that anything that be done with the property had to be master planned first. And so that's one of the reasons why we're doing this. So whatever would have been done with the property would have had to been master planned first. And, you know, I was on that review committee, and, you know, Half is a world-class design firm, and it's really kind of the Ferrari of design firms. And thanks to the generosity of the LAD family that, you know, we're able to be able to go in this direction. And also to be able to include the other seven acres. I know, again, that was mentioned in the briefing, but that the other seven acres will be included in this, this master plan. And, you know, and just to echo kind of the statements that were made already is that one of the reasons we also went with them is because they recognized right away that it was the ecology and habitats, that that was the focus, our primary concern with this. And they also demonstrated their understanding of the zoning ordinance that we passed or that we, you know, that we modified. And so just, I just wanted to add those comments about, you know, one reason why we went with this firm. Thank you. And if there's nothing else, I'd like to move to approve.
Second. We have a motion to approve by Mr. Coontz, and we have a second by Mr. Contreras. No other discussion. Council, please vote. Unanimously approved. Thank you. And a major step forward for the Charles F. Ladd Nature Preserve. Thank you. Moving on to item number six, staff and board reports received the monthly financial report as of March 31st of 2024. Budget analyst Jennifer Odie. Floor is yours, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to give you the monthly financial report for the end of March. Can you believe it? We're already halfway done with the fiscal year. It certainly has flown by. So as we look at the financial report, being that it's halfway through the year, our benchmark percentage of the budget is 50%. So looking at all funds here, we have collected $46 million to date. Our property tax is at 92% of the budget. We've received year-to-date $1.8 million in interest income. Our actual revenue is at 56%. On the expenditure side, we have paid out $42 million to date. The actual expenses are less than 50. They're at 34%, which does include, again, that annual debt payment that we made in February as well as our biannual CIP transfers. We make transfers into the utility CIP fund, for example. So a snapshot of the property and sales tax, again, are at 92% on our property tax collections to date. On the sales tax, as I mentioned last month in February, we did have to refund $142,000 in sales tax that was audited by the state. So that has put us under our benchmark at this point. But being that we're two months behind in sales tax, our actuals are at 30%, so we're not trailing too far behind because of that refund. We are bouncing back. You'll see that in the next month. And just a snapshot of the Best Southwest, how we're trending as of January, when the March payment was made, was for January collection. So general fund, again, that benchmark revenue is 50%. Our actual revenue to date is 70% of the budget. And again, $1.1 million is in interest income. On the fund expenses, we're nearly halfway there with our payroll. Our actual expenses are trending at 42% at this time. I did include in the financial report just some information on some of the areas that might be trending below at this point and why, because we have a lot of seasonal expenditures coming on once we start mowing again in the spring, and we have our bigger events in the summertime. You'll start catching up in some of those areas. And just so you could see, it broken out here in the table view there. Again, 70% how that's broken out, as well as the 42% on the expenses. Utility fund, so we've collected $8.8 million to date. That's 41%. Since we do collect one month behind, that we are right on track with our collections. On the expenditure side, we've paid out $10.3 million, which is 46% of the budget. So $4.8 million is to Dallas Water Utilities and to the Trinity River Authority, as well as that $2.5 million that we transferred into the utility CIP fund. And again, just a table snapshot here of that fund. And some other fun highlights, again, the debt payment that we made in February. Hotel Motel, the contractual is at 59% to date. So those are the grants that have been paid out for hotel motel grants. In economic development, we have paid $339,000 in incentives to date. That covered eight local businesses. And then some just highlights on capital improvement projects. So Fire Station 1, $9.5 million has been spent to date. And just for wrapping up all the IT things, AV, access, security, building a fence. And then Armstrong Park, you know, that's complete as of March, and that project has been $3.1 million. Any questions?
Couple things if I might, Jennifer. Going back to slide 88. The title of this particular chart says property and sales tax. Is that true? Because it only says three years sales tax comparison, but.
My apologies, yes, it's only sales tax.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
No property.
Okay, because, you know, something is occurring in the Best Southwest, and I've made mention of this at the Best Southwest partnership to the other mayors. And I think this council going forward needs to understand something that's happening in property taxes. It's an unfair comparison to compare the city of Duncanville to the other four. Because look what, if you look what's happening in terms of the concrete being constructed in the other cities, in terms of impermeable surfaces, in terms of parking lots, the warehouses are being built, the pure concrete going up. And I don't know what abatements the cities have offered, those warehouses going up on spec. But they're, they're in the range of over 300,000 square feet apiece. And if you travel down 45, 35, and 67, you see these monstrous warehouses going up with no occupancy. So in the future, to look forward to any property tax comparisons, we need to set ourselves apart and say, this is who we are. This is what we are. And I think it's an unfair comparison to compare us against any of the other cities that are putting up these monstrous warehouses of 300,000 square feet plus. As I said, I don't know what abatements they've offered for the construction, but just as something is a caveat for the council going forward and for, in looking at our budget, we look at our property tax as a property tax. This is who we are, what we are. And just taking that as something unique and disparate from the other three as something going forward. On slide 93, just one other comment. It's, you talk about EDC. Do you happen to know, or city manager, do you happen to know what the balance of, the bottom line is for the, for the EDC right now?
Like the fund balance or the cash balance? Or the cash balance? Page twenty-five of your actual report, but the unaudited fund balance at this point is six point five million.
Six point five, okay, okay. And I just make mention of that because we just approved something tonight, giving them more authority to, to allocate those funds under fifty thousand dollars with their own authority, so very good. Thank you for that. Any comments or questions from council? Seeing none, thank you very much. With that, it completes our business on the agenda, and with the completion of all our business for tonight, we do stand adjourned. The timestamp is eight zero eight PM. City Secretary, thank you very much.